Please stand.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Clinton Public Schools School Committee to order. This is the meeting of Monday, April 9th. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to ask everyone to remain standing for a moment of silence for Christine Flaherty, former Clinton Middle School teacher and town librarian. We will start with a motion to accept the bills.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Can we have a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting of March 26, 2018?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded, is there any discussion on the minutes of March 26? There being none, all those in favor? Also unanimous, thank you. Do we have a -- we do not have a student representative with us tonight. Do we have anyone from the PTA here tonight? No. Special needs pack? No. Is there anything from the CTA tonight? Thank you. Is there any public comment tonight? There being none, as always, we will reserve the right to revisit that if need be at the conclusion of our business. Superintendent's report.
All right, so our first topic is just the FY '19 budget. Had that on here. The first one was just if there was any public hearing input or discussion that we needed to address, and there really wasn't. So I don't know, approval or next steps down there. I didn't know if the school committee wanted to maybe take a vote at this time to formally approve moving forward with this budget as presented. At least that way, we have a formal endorsement from the school committee. Obviously, as we get feedback, as we get information on different unknowns, and hear, you know, input from the town, we might have to revisit this, but at least this point, we would vote to move forward, you know, formally move forward with this.
Would a member like to make a motion to accept the budget for FY '19?
I'll make a motion to accept the draft budget for FY '19.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. A motion being made and seconded, is there any discussion on the FY '19 budget?
Did you hear, and I tried to answer it, no, but I'll just ask anyway, did you hear anything, any feedback from the town or any leaning, you know, anything other than, you know, I know you gave the presentation to the finance committee and the school, I mean, in the selectmen, but they didn't give you any?
No, at this point, I haven't got any. I mean, we got, I think, the only feedback I got was that, you know, it seemed like they were receptive to our presentation, receptive to the fact that I think we came in with a, our request is for a reasonable amount, you know, but I think at this point, they're still in their process of looking at what's going to be doable.
Yeah, I mean, I know they don't have all the departments, and I just didn't know if they kind of gave you a look at, you know.
No, I haven't got any, yeah.
A little bit, you know.
I would say one note, just so everyone's aware, in this, there was two changes to this packet, this book, from the last book. First one is the date on the front, and the second was in the budget on page B6. We did actually split out the student activity expenses. There was money put in there for the first program last year, there was $5,000 put into the first program last year. We actually split that out. You can see it's the same account number, but we put it as a separate line so you could see that money for the first program, and how that money was $5,000 last year, and it was increased to $6,000 this year, so that there was, you know, trying to show that good faith support of that program. So I just, that's the only change. Just if anyone wanted to know, you know, what the difference was, just in full disclosure, that was the only change in the budget. Nothing monetarily, just sort of how it was broken out.
And nothing that affected the ultimate bottom.
Right. It was, we weren't adding the money, we were just simply splitting the line into two so you could see more detail.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
I can save, I can wait till the final numbers. I mean, I got a couple of things I want to talk about, but if it's, well, I would know when the final, whether they have something, I can just wait or I can send it to you.
And I think this is a motion as, you know, as was put forward, that this is a motion to accept the draft version of the budget that, you know, we have presented to the town boards and.
I mean, and I know, I knew, actually, I sat with both your briefs, so I, you know, I think I've got this pretty much covered. I still, you know, and I know you didn't get an answer with the selectmen, though, I still wish that the town would take ownership of those, that.
The warrant articles.
Yeah, the maintenance on all the buildings, and that, you know, and even in here, I saw that with, you know, with that turf company, I think it's what, 36 grand to take care of the football field. It's another one that I, you know, I don't know, and I know you asked it, you didn't get it, you know, and I know that facilities department is new, and they're still, you know, kind of seeing how that's going to operate, but, you know, I look at, you know, the town, the Central Park or Fuller Field, and those are immaculate, and the town's doing that either, Mr. Gorman down at Fuller or the Parks and Rec, you know, it seems that the school's wrapped up in, paying a company to do something, the town looks like they have the capability to do for us, and would say, you know, that's almost a teacher salary.
Yeah. No, and I agree that that's, that is the, so I think just the way the budget process was done this year, because it was such a new department, was for everyone to kind of still budget for their own individual departments in that sense, but I think it's just buying us time so that we can slowly move that in. You know, we said the director of facilities, Russ has been involved in all that, he's aware of those contracts and those types of things. He also has some ideas of how to try to do that more efficiently, but until we kind of work out all those kinks of, how can we get that person over here to do this, you know, until we kind of get that all smoothed out, we wanted to at least make sure we budgeted for what we know will work.
The other thing, and I can send you this in an email if you want, whatever, but when I look through it, every school, every, not just the schools, but every individual section or department is ordering, you know, is budgeted for supplies, you know, is there something to be.
Economy of scale.
Yeah, you know, I know, what is it, 30 years, 40 years ago, Mr. Veterans did it, you know, in a room closet down at the high school, but it seemed like if he ordered everything and then, and that's why I can add all the individual neighborhood schools, whether there be savings in, you know, one person ordering for the entire school department.
Yeah, and I think we'll, and I think a lot of.
Again, I'm not trying to dump this off your.
No, but a lot of, some of our.
When you give me this to read for the weekend.
No, although some of those orders are done that way, or sometimes those orders might be done off a bid list, where basically, as being part of that bid purchasing, we're kind of getting that economy of scale anyway, so it's a set price. But yeah, I think definitely looking at those type of efficiencies are the things we're trying to do, yeah. So even though, but we have to report it by location code.
Okay.
So even though it's reported that way, there might be things like paper, right? So there's going to be paper budgeted for each building, but we're either going to do probably a bulk order from paper or ordering paper off a bid list, which we know is already like a bulk rate price because part of a purchasing collaborative.
Because I mean, yeah, if you look at the different schools, I think one's $7,000, one's two, one's five, it's kind of a, you know, I mean, they're all using basically the same supplies, it just seemed like a big vast difference in, you know, how they break it out. Anyway.
All right. Good points, all. Anything else? There being none, all those in favor of approving the budget, the FY '19 budget for the Clinton Public Schools School Department?
Draft.
Draft.
Okay.
Draft, sorry, that was the motion.
Approving my motion. So the draft is for the 3.94?
Yeah.
Okay, just, it's.
Yes, the operating 3.04.
Operating 3.04.
Yeah.
3.07, operating 3.94, general fund, yep.
3.07.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much. And thank you and to your team for all of the hard work that has gone into and will still continue to go into this process. I think that, you know, based on some of the feedback that we've gotten from the finance committee and the select board, you know, they're appreciative of the level of detail that you're bringing forward.
And like I said, you know, so that word is draft, you know, I think it's just, we've done our, I think at this point, we've done our due diligence of, we've presented to the FinCon, we've presented to the selectmen, we've had our public hearing, this is a budget that we can support, and then we'll, as we feel with the, as we learn what the town's going to be able to support, and as we start getting, you know, more figures on what the state's going to do and what the federal government's going to do, we can, we can adjust as necessary going forward. All right, so that's FY '19. So now it's time to come back to today. We'll do the FY '18 budget update, so I don't know, Karen, if you want, come on up and she'll give, walk us through her third quarter update for the budget overall, and then Mr. McGreal's here, who's going to do sort of a third quarter athletic update as well.
Okay, so I'm going to start with the general fund, the budget update, and then we'll go into the athletic, okay? Third quarter, the general fund through 3/31/2018, the expenditures totaled $14,572.01. The total FY '18 budget of $22,152.032. This represents 66% of the total budget that's been spent. Does not seem to be any issues with the budget at this time. If I add in the encumbrances to date of $7,657.078, the ending balance would be a negative of $77,247, but that has not included the circuit breaker, which has not been applied yet. If I apply the sped tuition circuit breaker to the sped tuition, the budgeted amount of $995.097, then our balance at this time would be $917,849. So we're in very good position right now. We don't foresee any problems. The expenditure, salaries versus the expenditure, it's always very similar. Salaries are $9,45,343, which is 62% of this budget. The expenses are $5,526,858, 38%.
Karen, I'm sorry, what page do you want?
She's just reading her notes, so she's a summary, she's reading the summary of this, yeah, sorry.
Okay, well, like, what page should I be looking at? I'm just bouncing on out.
The first, I can go through, the first thing is your budget update, which is all your expenses, okay? So if you go to page five.
Thank you.
That's the total, as you see at the bottom, where it's a negative $77,247.
Thank you.
And then if you see the budgeted circuit breaker of $995.097.
Yes.
And I apologize.
No, that's okay, I just, I just wanted to.
Same question.
Okay.
So if you look, I mean, so just, if you look at that, that one she just showed you, you know, you see like private residential school tuition, it looks like we're in the negative $318,000. Collaborative program tuition looks like we're in the negative $277,000, but we haven't applied any circuit breaker funding to those line items yet. So we can apply, when we apply the circuit breaker to that, those line items won't be in the negative. So the, that's why she's saying, well, it shows we have a $77,000 deficit right now. We haven't applied any of that, almost a million dollars in circuit breaker that was budgeted. So right now, we actually have an uncommitted balance of $917,000 to get us through the last quarter.
Right. If you look on that page.
So Karen, I think we have a question.
One question for you. It's okay. So for that deficit of $77,247, is that for all three quarters combined, the deficit?
Much, 31st.
Okay, so the last quarter that we have, we're not necessarily looking at another deficit of that amount, we're looking at a portion of that.
Yeah.
Like one-third of that?
This also includes encumbrances, and I've encumbered all the sped tuition, and I've encumbered.
And all the salaries and everything like that, so it should be even less, yeah.
Okay, but we're probably on track.
Very much on track, yeah.
For like one-third of that number for the fourth quarter, and then we still have, you know, the $900,000 that we haven't applied.
We still have the $900,000, right. And if you look beside each of the sped tuition, you'll see how much we have budgeted in each category, okay? I was going to get into a little bit of detail on the sped tuition on this quarter, because I don't really foresee any issues in the budget, so I thought I'd go over a little bit of the sped tuition in this one.
Can you give us a little bit of an understanding, and maybe you need the support of the special ed director, but we're looking at a deficit, for example, you know, for the public that doesn't know, we're looking at for private residential school tuition, you know, is that roughly three kids that were over in that category, you know, what are we looking at?
Yeah, that's what I was going to go with, so.
Do you have all that?
I have all that for you, that's why I thought, especially with the way we're doing it right now, we haven't applied the circuit breaker, so decided we're going to apply it at the end of the year. So that's why I wanted to go over a little bit of the sped tuition.
So in your explanation.
I have last year and this year.
So you'll have what we thought that we were going to have in addition to numbers versus what we have today?
Right. So, as I said before, it appears that you're over budget, but you really aren't, okay? We have not applied the circuit breaker, and I'm going to give you the current counts, and then I'm going to give you what we had at the end of the year, last FY '17. And when we're doing the budgeting, that's usually what we're working on, working on what we have at that time, okay? So right now, I have six students in the diagnostic setting, which is a 45-day placement. There's been 13 of those total for the year. In private day, I have 14. Private residential, four. I have 20 in the collaborative, and I have a total of 44 out of district students.
And you have, I apologize.
That's okay.
To keep hitting.
That's okay.
No, just keep asking.
Can you, so the numbers that you just gave of what we have, can you say at the same time, so if we had, you said we had 13 diagnostic students.
Okay, you want me to go 17, right next to each other?
So we had 13 today.
Right.
What did we budget for?
Okay. We had, we had, we had, the diagnostic setting, we have six right now, we have 13 in total. At the end of FY '17, it was five, okay? And then in the public day school, we had, we don't have any right now. The public day school is nobody right now. The private day school is 14. At the end of last year, we had 25, so it's much less in the private day. The private residential, we have four. At the end of last year, we had six, so that's down too, okay?
So that's great, you know, having the numbers going in the right direction. Was that a lot of a contribution to the students coming back in district, or did some of those students age out?
Those questions you probably want to ask Kathy. So once I finish this, maybe we can ask her those questions on the differences and why. I just have the counts and the amount of money.
And all the other answers, so I forget.
I do know a little bit. The collaborative, right now, I have a collaborative of 20, and at the end of '17, I had 19, okay? The other thing that I also have right now is this two in CEIS, which Kathy could explain that more, so we are not paying for them at this time. And I also have two that were move-ins and that were not fiscally responsible until next year, okay? So that would bring your total out of district up to 48, okay? And at the end of FY '17, we had 56.
Were we responsible for transportation, though, for those two?
I believe we're responsible for the transportation on those two.
The two that we're paying for in July?
Yeah.
Did you pick up transportation today?
Until July.
Okay, yeah. I have all the runs, but.
The difference in price, you end up having to pick up, but there was no expense there.
No expense until July 1.
Okay, so if you had any other questions on this, you're welcome to ask Kathy.
Which is why I'm sitting here.
We're making eye contact, we're in.
Do you have any more questions on that before I move on?
I'll wait till you're lots of an ass to the house here.
Okay. I better be ready for this. I'm moving on to circuit breaker right now. We began this year at $771.25. As of 3/31, we received two payments, so we've received $372.278. The total estimated to receive at this time is $744,556. If I apply that cir, the circuit breaker that we budgeted for, that would end the balance, at the end of the year, would be $519,584. The reimbursement rate right now is 65% this year, and the number of sped students that were eligible for this claim were 37. The foundation budget per student was $43,094, okay? Do you have any questions on that? School choice, we begin the year with a balance of $181,000.
Again, sorry, but just.
Oh, I'm sorry, not following.
Where should we be looking?
It's, the circuit breaker was the third to last page in your packet, school choice is the fourth to last page.
If you go to circuit breaker, it looks like this.
Yep.
I have no. Does anybody have any questions on circuit breakers?
Doesn't sound like it.
Okay, so the next page would be school choice.
It's actually previous, I think.
Yeah, I think those are my, yeah, I think they're a little.
It's the one before.
Okay, one before. So we began the year with $181,001, and we received 300, as of 3/31, we've received We're estimated to receive a total of $471.06. The estimate of the salaries that we're going to use for the circuit breaker is six teachers at $404,149, and if we follow budget, the year-end balance would be $247,790. As of this point, I have a count of 81 school choice students, and that's up three students from last quarter, okay? Last quarter was 77. Does anybody have any questions on school choice?
70. We're with you.
Okay. The total grant awards is up to $1,088,371. This year, we got some additional grants, which included the NiPao Foundation grant, the Perkins grant, the Title IV grant, and we also got a Mass State Science and Engineering Fair mini-grant. Some of the expenses that we used, that we paid for out of the grants, was some staff, edivate, Wilson training, DRAs, transportation, Alice training, literacy intervention kits, technology, and more, okay? Does anybody have questions on grants? Let's move on to the revolving. I have a list of all the revolving, beginning balance, revenue, the salaries and stipends, and expenses and balances. The only thing I was going to indicate on that was the rental of facilities. We still have some money in the rented facilities. Repairs and maintenance has gone over, so if we did need to use some of that rental of facilities, we could, but at this time, we have money in the general fund to cover it. We have used, in the rental of facilities, what we've done this year was, we had the paint project at the CMS, with Jim lights at CHS, the new playground at CES, carpeting at the central office, the elementary school got security cameras, and we repaired the central office elevator, okay?
So just, if I could, the new playground at CES, wasn't, didn't most of that?
Most of it was, was the insurance, right?
Through insurance, okay.
But that's when we made the, remember, we voted to use a little bit from there so we could do a full replacement, not just a repair, yeah.
I just wanted to say so it was clear that it wasn't, didn't absorb the total cost of that.
That was, the next thing was, I said, the insurance restitution, we did have two claims this year. We had the elementary school playground, and we also had the food service at the Wacken freezer, had a problem with that, so they threw the two insurance rest.
Both completely legitimate complaints, is that, is that claims?
They're all straightened out right now.
No, but is that something that we should be worried about affecting our, you know, coverage next year, or premiums, or anything like that?
I don't think so.
Okay, great.
The food was service was more the spoilage from food incident, but. The techbook, the technology and textbook article, it's pretty much, we've completed that, we've expended it all. We purchased textbooks, and we've bought a lot of flat-screen TVs for the schools, mostly the elementary school.
Yeah, so we mentioned that, and I've mentioned that a couple of budget presentations, that the flat-screen TVs are kind of what we're using instead of like the interactive whiteboards at the elementary, because they can just sort of Chromecast right to them and that kind of stuff. That's when people know we're not just putting movies on.
No, they're terrific additions.
But next is going to roll into athletics, so I'm going to start with a little of the general fund with athletics and revolving.
Athletics is bad.
Yep. I see the, the school choice money that we're receiving, I mean, I'm sure it's on here, you have it on here, what we're paying out?
I don't have the paying out, that's, I can get that if you mention it for you, but that's at the town, so I can get it for you if you like.
Yeah, no, I think it, that's the budget for next year, but I wanted to, I can get it from you.
I think there's historical data somewhere.
Yeah, I thought it was in here, it's okay, but I get it from you, it's not that, nothing hurts.
What we pay out for school choice would come out of the town side.
Right, I just want to see what the difference was.
On page, on page 17 of the budget book, there, it doesn't have this year's amount, but it has up through last year, so if you want to get a sense of how, what we get in, what we pay out, yeah. The only difference is the, so the reason we don't have that exact figure reflected in this report is because the, the school choice in money comes to a revolving account that the school department can use for the, for the cost of those students that come in. The school choice out money comes directly from the town, so we don't, we don't actually physically, that money doesn't physically pass through us.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
So before I get more into athletics, does anybody have any questions on that regular general?
As always, thank you for the detail.
You're welcome.
Mind if I can ask you a question? One kid aged out, and the other kid moved.
I see, so they both.
We're really tracking them right now. Kathy and I are working on a monthly basis to make sure we're tracking them. All right, so if you want to, this would be the athletics, anybody else with that one?
Leave you going to one page before.
So what I'm going to do is hold up in detail about the numbers and the money, and then if you have any questions, then you can ask just, okay? So I'm going to start with the general fund, so the budget for FY '18 was an 82% general fund split, 18% revolving fund split. I was going to, I wanted to indicate that, whereas you're thinking of, you know, not having any fees, so just to give you an idea of what it was for this year. So the 82% for the general fund is $243,716, and the 18% for the revolving was $52,106, okay? So as of 3/31/18, we've expended 77% of the general fund budget and 40% of the revolving fund budget, okay? And very much in line with last year. Last year at this time, we expended 79% of the general fund budget, and we, it was almost close, it was 50, the year-to-date balance remaining in the general fund right now is $54,907, and at this time last year, it was $51,306. That's kind of interesting to see how close you are with the athletics. The amount that I have remaining is enough to pay the spring coaches' salaries, and they're estimated to be about $44,457, and then have a little bit more money from the additional expenses. The bulk of the expenses were salaries, as usual, $111,291, which indicated about 59% of the total expenditures. Transportation was 18%, supplies and material 18%, fees and dues 2%, and insurance was 3%. The revolving account, the beginning balance at the athletic revolving account at $7117 was $10,268, which was much better than it was the year before. The year before, you only had a couple thousand, so we'd be better with holding on to a little bit of my money. As of right now, your revenue is $41,525, which is up $5,254 over last year. The total winter revenue was $12,808, which is up $352 over last year, and the total fall revenue, $28,717, which is up $4,903 over last year. Are you, do you have a question?
I do. So for your officials and other salaries, you're already over by almost $6,000?
Are you looking at? Yes, and what we're doing with that is, some of the, we're trying to expend all of the money in the general fund, and then if we, if we do not need to use as much of all revolving, then we won't, so we'll kind of wait a little bit to see how we do, because it's the bottom line, and we still have a little bit more money left.
So there's no surprise there, it's just that, with what fund you're pulling from at the current time?
Right, yeah. No, I know I have enough money to cover, I already have my list of coaches, so I know I have enough money to cover that.
So it looks like there's a deficit, but it's just where you're pulling from at the current time?
Right, mhm, yeah. The total expenses, $20,765, 40% of what we budgeted. The year-to-date balance in the revolving fund is $31,028, so I still have, especially tracking so close to last year, I think, I don't really foresee any problems either, because I'm, when I look at last year, it's so close, and we ended last year with the $10,000, so we seem to be doing pretty well. we ended last year with the ten thousand, so we seem to be doing pretty well. If you go to the next page, there's this page here, so a little bit of your athletes and stuff. Can you find that one? What I wanted to say about that, that in the past, Tina especially, had asked a little bit about what the athletes were with the free and the reduced and all that. So, this year, thirty-eight percent of the athletes paid the full fee, with the remainder paying, but were reduced, free, waived, or did not pay anything at all. A hundred and thirty-two paid the full fee, a hundred and seventy-five were free, reduced, and the reduced included the family cap and multiple sports. And then you had six athletes that were waived, and there's thirty-three athletes that have not paid yet. So, I still have some outstanding.
So, what is the practice with that? So, they're able to, it's a determined percentage they're supposed to be paying?
Mm-hmm.
They were considered to have to pay in full, but they were allowed to start playing without paying?
Those kind of questions you're going to have to ask the athletic director. But, I'm going to just finish this, and then you can ask him all his questions, okay? Now, if you look at this report here that I gave you, where it says, I have to pick a glass, I'll have to read it. FY eighteen, thus far, it's three hundred and forty-six athletes, and FY seventeen says two hundred and sixty-nine, and it appears that you have way more athletes, okay? But I think it's deceiving, because what's happened was, when I started doing the athletic reports in the last couple of years, I, in the past, I didn't get the rosters, so I started asking for the rosters. So, now that I have the rosters, I have a real accurate list of who's on each team. So, I have my roster in front of me, I do my charts, and make sure that I'm getting the money from everybody, so that update, I, I don't think you have this real boost in athletes, I think you just have a better accounting of how many athletes you have. So, I just wanted to make sure that I indicated that, so you don't think all of a sudden you have this over a hundred more athletes playing, okay?
Like, we just better captured the amount of athletes that were paying for, like, weren't paying a fee. So, as opposed to just our business office only having a record of who paid, we now have a record of who participated, even if they were free, yeah.
Because it could have been that they were reporting the people that were paying for reduced, so now we have that rosters and really keeping track of it. The other thing, one other quick thing I wanted to note, if you look at the top on the gate receipts, it appears like the gate receipts was a timing issue. The fall was up, but the winter was down. I think that was just really getting that final football, maybe so that it came in, the winter receipts rather than the fall. Because again, if you look at fall versus winter with your gate receipts and your, I mean, it's seventeen and eighteen with your gate receipts, it's very close. FY eighteen was eleven thousand, two sixty-seven, FY seventeen, eleven thousand, thirty-four. So, very similar. I think it was just a timing issue on that.
So, you know, and if this is a better question for Jack, does, Thanksgiving was homeless here, does that, is that a split kind of thing?
Yes.
I asked this question before, I apologize.
Yes, yeah, we split the gate with the showbook.
Okay. So, and, and is that, is that game profitable? Is it?
It, it's probably one of our bigger gates, you know, because of the, you know, the fact it's a big rivalry.
Yeah.
And, you know, people are home, you know, because they come home for the Thanksgiving. So, that's a big draw right there, so they come in more than other games.
All right, so where it's split, it wouldn't necessarily look different, because you're, you're kind of dividing that up between the two schools?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, having a home game then doesn't, doesn't add to our bottom line?
So, I'd say typically, that's what most schools have done, is they work out that Thanksgiving split, so that instead of it being every year, you get this Thanksgiving boost, and then the year, next year you don't, you kind of even it out between the schools each year, yeah.
Okay. All right, that's helpful, thanks.
And I just have one more, and then I'm going to pass it over to Jack. You had asked me in the past how much if everybody paid full, okay?
Yeah.
So, at this point, with the fall and the winter, if all athletes had paid for the total athletic, the total athletic fees I have right now is twenty-eight thousand, nine fifty-four. If everybody had paid the fee total, it would be forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty, so a difference of eighteen thousand, two ninety-five.
Thank you.
Okay? And that's all I have.
And I know we're going to try to budget it next year, not to charge it, but if, if everyone had to pay in full, half those kids wouldn't play.
I understand.
That's, you know, I mean, I mean, I'm not, not, I'm just saying, just hope you know, you know, we wouldn't take in forty-eight thousand, because those kids that are, that are, you know, waived, are waived because their families don't have that money.
Right.
Trust me, there's a lot more free and reduced coming.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have.
Definitely there's a lot more free and reduced coming, so.
You know, it's just.
And some of those kids who did not pay, I don't know, it could be that they can't, and maybe they don't have the paperwork.
Yeah, that's my question, the ones that haven't paid, are they, do we know, is there somehow, like documented that they're, and I know, you know, they qualify to like not pay because of, you know, same way kids get qualified for free and reduced lunch, somewhere.
If they're not on the list from NAM, then, because NAM will give Jack the list of the free and reduced that are already documented. If they're not on the list, then they got to fill out some paperwork, so if they didn't fill out the paperwork, and they're not on that list, then they're not considered free and reduced until then. And there were, like I said, there were a few kids that were waived, because I think Jack and Jim had decided that for those kids, it was deemed, okay?
Yeah, so, so I was just trying to figure out, is that at the very bottom, thirty-three athletes have not paid. Are they athletes that we expected them to pay, or were they athletes that qualified that they didn't have to pay?
There was no paperwork to qualify that they would be free and reduced.
Okay.
And I have a list of those athletes, and what I have done is followed them through if they played another sport.
Sure.
I notified the coaches, I says, listen, you need to, you know, I need to talk to them, I talked to them multiple times.
Yeah.
I says, you know, please hold back their uniforms, you know, and then we'll work on that. And I says, give me something, so I, and I do have some collecting now, because they play in spring, so I'm catching up on that.
And, but then, that, you know, we're not a collection agency, and like, you know what I mean, that we get, went through this with the cafeteria, like, we start, you know, now that start, starting, starts to take up Jack's time, other people's time, to track down that money. So, that's just, you know, I'm not sa, I'm not making a, saying like, right, wrong, or indifferent, I'm just, I, you know, it's, too often, we kind of get going down that path of like, collecting money, and it's just, there's going to be a more efficient way to, to, to do it, you know? I, I don't know, I just, when I start hearing things like that, but like, so, you know, there, I, I think Brendan's idea of, you know, if possible, if we can eliminate the fees, that, that would, you know, free up, you wouldn't have to be worrying about chasing down kids that, that may like owe money, you know what I mean? So, there's, if it's possible, I, I think it's a good thing to, to investigate.
I'd say one other thing that we are, Karen's been exploring, is looking with the My School Bucks people that we use for the, that we use for the, for the food services, and looking at, they have modules, so you can expand that, so you could use it, we could use it for daycare payments, we could use it for the preschool, we could use it for athletic fees, and that way, it would allow us to, it would, it would allow people to pay with a credit card, if they needed to pay with a credit card, those types of things. So, even if it's that, you know, they don't have the money right now, but they're working, they could at least square up and do that. So, not just necessarily for athletic fees, but for all fees, we're looking at, you know, expanding our options for, for making it easier for people to pay, you know, whether it's debit card, credit card.
Even with that service, they would give us like an iPad that we could take credit cards, and that would be able to take a credit card.
So, if we go in that direction, I know that the user gets charged the fee, so if they're spending forty dollars at lunch, they're going to get charged like two dollars and fifty cents. As a school system, though, we don't pay a three percent penalty, do we, or?
No, if the only, if it's, there's different models for it, but if it's, if it's the user being charged for that model, that's the only charge, we're not, we don't get also charge.
Because, you know, if you go to the vending store, someone uses a credit card.
Right.
Paying an expense for that, we're not paying an expense for people using that.
No, we could, we could put the, we have the option to put the expense on our end, and just like compensate our prices the other way, but instead, you know, we don't, we haven't, that's not the model we use. We've done the model where we don't pay the fee, the user would pay the, the service fee.
Sure, it wasn't a fee on both sides.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
No, just one fee. And you can do it either with it shows the fee there, or you can, like Dr. Myers said, absorb it into your, what you're charging, so either way.
Because the nice thing about that is that they can put up any kind of amount they want on it in the four years they're in school. So, if they have multiple kids, and you say, hey, guess what, there's a tough month, it's December. They say, hey, I'll put twenty dollars towards this. They, they have four years to pay it off, instead of like one season, you know, chasing it down. So, it's, you know, it gives them a little bit of leeway there.
It definitely, I do agree, though, that there's, I see it in the preschool, you know, a lot of more people that are in more difficulty with paying, paying it, I think, more free and reduced here.
Any other questions for our business manager or athletic director?
It's more for business, so I know that Tom Clinton is eligible for free reduced, I asked a question at another meeting.
Yeah.
We probably don't have the answer yet, but if we could look into.
We already applied.
So, we already applied?
We applied, we haven't gotten the FBA.
Right. But where we were at last year, because of the timing of it, not knowing we were eligible, our expenses would have been larger than if we offered that free service to everybody. Now, we're looking at the athletic fees for being free, that's one of the areas that would have been impacted, looking at the free lunches, so if maybe we look at what the impact is there, then we can offset that in what we've budgeted for, maybe with athletic fees, so that we don't have that negative impact.
Yeah, I mean, I know, you know, I know Karen and Nan have been working, you did a webinar, and did a few things, and did this, submitted the application, so I think we got to wait back, wait until we hear what their reimbursement percentage would be for us, I think that's one of the things we'll wait on, and then we'll.
Yeah, because even if you're eligible for it, it sometimes doesn't work for you.
Right, right. So, that's where we were last year, right, when we looked at the reimbursement percentage.
But I know from here and from other districts that are enrolled into that program, you know, for example, the seniors, all of their college applications are for free.
Right.
There's a discount for their AP exam, so there, there's major discounts along the way for them.
Well, and I think also, I think the, the point is taken too, is looking at, looking at the overall expenses, right? It's just like, like Ed's point, right? How much time and effort goes into collecting for unpaid lunch balances, or how much, how much time and effort goes into handling all the cash at the register, and processing the deposits, and doing all kind of stuff that all of a sudden now, those are things you don't really have to do, or if you do, and you're doing it on, you know, you're processing twenty dollars in à la carte, and you're not doing, you know, a whole bunch of lunches, so.
Right, and to your point, last year, it's not something we could have addressed in August, but maybe it's something we can address again.
Right.
I don't know, this is just a suggestion, if you do have to go to athletic fees, but I don't know if you wanted to do that at the main office, because we did bring the preschool and daycare and everything at the main office with the Nat and I, and that has worked really well. I know you're looking to hopefully do it without athletics.
Our draft budget has them gone, let's wait till we have to change.
Hopefully, keep it that way, but it would be nice for the athletes.
That's draft.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Baseball update, Clinton Varsity came back in the sixth, they beat Air Shirley, nine six.
Oh, nice.
They were down six one.
Did softball play?
Yes.
That wasn't as good?
Leave on a good note.
So, the next bullet on here, top of the second page, is the school safety, just giving an update. We did review the new lockdown shelter-in-place procedures with the staff, they reviewed them with the students. We are scheduled to have drills later this week. There will just be drills, we'll now clearly announce that there are drills, we'll do a follow-up call home after the drills. But also, we, we have, if you saw one of, one of Karen's grants mentioned, that Alice Training was one of the expenditures, so we did use a couple of different grants to kind of piece together the, the online portion for the Alice Training, so there's a one-hour online Alice Training, training, I guess, that the, that all our faculty will, will be completing. Our subscription to that service will start in May, and if you remember, when part of the PD rescheduling, we added a couple hours, so it's about an hour-long training, so that we'll be able to use that for one of those sessions. Once all the staff have completed the, once, once the staff have completed the, the online component, then we're able to move into the actual training from our training trainers about the specific scenarios and those types of things. So, so we'll move right along with that, hopefully by the end of May, you know, hopefully by May twenty-second, that second date, we have everyone staying, that extra hour, we'll be able to have all of our staff have completed the online Alice Training.
That drills this week, right?
Yeah.
Can you do me a, not do me a favor, but I, I know how, I know, in fact, I get your calls, you know, weekly and nightly, whatever, but just put that on social media somewhere that the drill, because there are people that are not, you know, they're not involved in the schools, they don't have kids in the schools.
Yeah, you don't want the word to get, yeah.
Yeah, they're going to see, you know, whether it's the police guard, or they're going to hear something, and it'll blow up. By the time you get a chance to squash it, it'll have already taken on its own life.
Okay. So, maybe we just do a reminder the night before that we will have the drills, yeah.
Something, just.
Let me know enough time to put it on our social media, too, because we'll reach a lot of people that aren't at the schools.
Okay.
Cool, thanks.
All right. Just a couple of facilities updates. The middle school water heater, the, there's actually a whole like bank of water heaters that, a few of them haven't really been operable for a while, and a few are, so they've been running on partial capacity, I guess, but it's been meeting the demand, but some of those are in bad shape, corroding, ready to, you know, on their last legs. So, Russ has been working, and we are going to do sort of a, a replacement water heater. The guy brought in was able to quote us sort of a different one, so if you look at it now, there's like a, a whole series of like water heaters, almost like you'd see in your own basement, you know, but this will be like a more larger kind of industrial one, they'll be able to replace all of those. So, that'll be, that replacement should be happening soon, was basically considered an emergency replacement for those. Statement of interest for the middle school has been submitted, we were able to get all those, those in, so we'll wait and see, and hear from the, the MSBA, and, you know, wait and see from them. National Grid, remember you approved the National Grid project, we did have a kickoff meeting with them today. They're actually going to begin replacing the outside lights up here over April vacation, so like the parking lights and stuff, they'll start replacing those in April vacation. Starting on May, I think you said May second, or right around there, they should have their lights in for the, the interior. They'll start doing the interior lights. What they'll be able to do is they'll work in the evenings, they'll basically work like a, like a, like a two to ten shift, almost, so once school's over, and they'll come in, and they'll basically just come in and do, you know, a room, you know, room or a few rooms a night until they, until they get it done. We do have the, and that, the same group doing the lights will also do the, the fans in the gym area, so the gym, all the gym lights and the gym fans will be, would be replaced.
Congratulations.
So, so that'll, that'll get going. So, hopefully, hopefully that'll help. You'll be surprised how many, how many complaint emails I got about the middle school gym lights, so those will, those will hopefully cut down next year. We do continue, did have a recent quarterly SEMA meeting, where we were able to talk, and I think those meetings are really productive, it brings pretty much all the, you know, all the people in town around to talk about our emergency preparedness, and one thing the town is working on is trying to come up with a messaging system that we could use, somewhat, maybe like a code red or something that they might use in some other communities, where people can sign up and get emergency alerts. The other thing, we had some good discussions about how we're going to need to interact as multiple departments in the event of a crisis. There were some examples of how, you know, you know, so there's some towns that are use like their garbage trucks to come and like block off a street if the event, like if there was something that were to happen up here, you could actually block off the street using garbage trucks for DPW trucks, Sanders, so that you can, you know, contain a scene and keep people away in the event, that's what you needed to do till it was, till it was clear. And that, while it's not going to be a permanent solution, because eventually people just drive around a garbage truck, it's hopefully buys you enough time till you can get the, it's hopefully buys you enough time till you can get the, you know, the other police officers that would be on call on like Boylston or whatever to come in. So, so those are productive meetings. We did talk a little bit about the generator, at least told them that we did have that on there. You know, reminded them we had that on there, just bring it to the table, and we'll see, we'll see how that goes. And the fire station, I'd just like to always keep that going. I talked to Phil the other day, and we're still working on getting the RFP out, but he's, he's working on it. We should get that done, that'll be the request for proposals for the feasibility study there. So that should be coming out shortly. It doesn't, it, with the anticipated amount, it does not need to go through a full bid process, but it will need to get, will need to be posted, will need to get at least three quotes, so. And I think that's all I have.
Excellent, thank you very much. Do we have anything new from the policy subcommittee? Nope. Anything from the marketing subcommittee?
Nothing to report.
Okay, great. Under old business, do we have an update on the Memorial Veterans Athletic Conference?
I saw her email. I haven't got back with her as far as, you know, with the funding between the two clubs, I guess, the Legion and the, but I did, she was probably right about, we put that, changed that one, the kind of generic, you know, we want to have three branches, or three, whatever they were, medallions or whatever on each side. I don't know who brought it up, the Merchant Marine, I always forgot about them. So whoever brought that up, I thanked them, because as you know, we would have put it on there, and, you know.
That'd be the first thing you hear about, yeah.
You know, yeah, so I'll, I'll get back with her, and I'll just see, see her, or whatever. I just kind of, I guess, between the two organizations, and...
They're gonna work it out?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think Memorial, they may know with this weather, I don't know.
Anything under, any, anything else under old business? Anything under new business?
Just a reminder about the, the STEAM Fair.
Thank you.
So Emory, the STEAM Fair, Thursday night is the open house. That starts at, I'll just let you...
Six to 7:30, yeah.
Yeah, and then...
And then the judging is Friday morning from 8 to like 9:50. The judges will go in a room and talk about it, and we'll announce the winners at 9:45, live in assembly with grade six, seven, and eight students.
Okay, we do have, we have a guest speaker, I believe, I'm gonna mess up the pulmonologist, what is it, for the lungs? How do you say it?
Was that called the...
Yeah, so it seems I said it right. I could have said it totally wrong, I had no idea, but that's, but yeah, she, it's, is it, it's Alicia?
Yes.
And I, forgive me, I can't write, Hoag went to high school, so she, yeah. So she's gonna come speak to, yeah.
Yeah, she's a doctor.
She's a physician, PhD physician, I believe.
So she'll be the guest speaker Thursday evening.
Yep, that'll be good. And I know Scott Sermack is gonna also speak at the STEAM Fair on the Thursday night. Just very quick, kind of talk about the high schools, science department, and their philosophy and things like that at the, at the open house. So that's when the speakers will, will both be there, and then, yeah, the next day, we're gonna do the judging. We're changing it up a little bit this, this year, I think it'll be an improvement. Doing the judging the next day in the morning, and then we'll have like a little ceremony for the, you know, first, second, third prize students, so should be good.
So speaking of first, do we have an update on?
First Robotics?
Yeah, is that...
Well, nothing since the last, well, Paul's speaking, you got Bryant. Bryant was the last one, I don't know, I think we might have had a meeting since that.
Just met tonight with the parents for Detroit, head to Detroit the 25th. Be there, 400 other teams.
Which is the national championships of first.
Yes, last year, they split up the national championship, where the week before, there'll be 400 teams in Houston, and then 400, so there's co-champions. This is the second year running, but first year, we're going to Detroit, we were in St. Louis for eight years. We can experience it.
You couldn't get in the Houston one? You couldn't get in the Houston one?
Well, please extend our best wishes to the team and everyone associated with it. And just thank you all for being such great ambassadors for Clinton High School and the town of Clinton.
I will do that, thank you.
Paul, did you tell, I don't know if these guys know that they won, we won the judges' award?
Yeah, I announced that at the last meeting.
Okay, sorry.
I was just gonna jump in and push back, yeah.
Okay.
You're right, it did.
Same thing, yeah.
I, because you explained it to me, what the judges' award, what does it entail? And like, because I remember, it was, it's a nice award, it definitely reflects good on the school.
Yeah, there's a set of, a set of awards in a lot of every competition, but then the judges reserve the right. And here you have, you know, there was about 16 various STEAM people from various companies and colleges. And they pick out a team that just doesn't fall into a category, and they, you know, what they're doing is right. And they were, you know, interviewed a bunch of our kids, and they took a look at our robot. And we received this about three or four years ago, also, the judges' award at one of these districts, so.
It has something to do with like the, like the presentation of the students, the way their, their understanding of the robot, and how they can explain it to the judges, so, which is good.
Usually the drive team.
Yeah.
So our kids are very knowledgeable of their robot, they put the thing together multiple times. So they did a nice job with it.
That's great. Again, good luck to the team, good luck to the STEAM Fair, it just keeps getting bigger and, and better. Great news, good, good to end on that. We will go into executive session under Chapter 38, Section 21 of Massachusetts General Law, the open meeting law. The committee will enter into executive session to discuss collective bargaining. The committee will not reconvene, requires a full call vote.
Vernon Bailey, aye.
Michael Hektire, aye.
Joel Bates, aye.
Ed Duvall, aye.